I now call to order the regular session meeting for the Lake Havasu Unified School District on April 10th, 2025. Row call, please.
Here.
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 Here. We will now have a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. This time, I'm going to invite Mrs. Williams from, from, for, yep. Are you going to introduce them?
So I just wanted to kind of introduce, we're going to start something new and special. So I am super excited to have some students at every board meeting to help us with the pledges. So tonight, I've asked Nautilus, we have two amazing student leaders, and I am going to turn it over to Ms. Williams to introduce them. But we're just so, we're just so happy they're going to be our very first pledge leaders.
Hello, everyone. I'm excited to introduce you to our students. This is Ms. Octavia, and she's in our pre-school classroom. And Ms. Octavia is a tour guide at Nautilus. And her favorite thing at school is she loves to sit on the rug and listen to her teacher read. And when Octavia grows up, she wants to be a unicorn rider. And this is Tucker Marsh, and Tucker is in third grade, and he is on our safety patrol and flight patrol for our leadership positions. And Tucker loves learning anything new at school and meeting new friends. And when Tucker grows up, he wants to be the boss of Fayette, A.C., and steel building business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
That is awesome.
All right. Thank you all. Now, we are going to have spotlights and recognitions. This evening, we'd like to welcome Superintendent Dr. Rebecca Stone to join us and Dr. Melissa Skinner.
So President Rose, Vice President Houston, members of the board, thank you for having me back this evening to do the spotlight recognition. The ultimate goal of human resources is to ensure our students are well-educated and safe. Our H R team supports this goal by hiring the very best employees who are then held to the standards set by the board. This is often a difficult job as you see people on their very best days during recruitment, hiring, and onboarding, and then in some cases, on their very worst days, from personal crisis to the loss of their job. Mrs. Bitterman and her team consistently handle these situations with the utmost integrity, grace, and compassion. I'm honored this evening to present Lindsay Bitterman with a certificate of recognition from the State Board of Education's investigative unit for her unwavering support and commitment to protecting Arizona students. This is only the second time that this recognition has been given across the entire state. The letter reads, "On behalf of the State Board of Education Investigative Unit, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks and commendation for your unwavering dedication to protecting Arizona's students. Your commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of students across the state is truly commendable. You have consistently demonstrated a high level of professionalism through the timely and accurate reporting of educator misconduct. Your attention to detail and diligence throughout this process have played an essential role in maintaining the integrity of our educational system. We deeply appreciate your commitment to both the process and the community, ensuring that the necessary steps are taken swiftly and accurately. Additionally, your support and cooperation during the entire process have made a lasting impact, and your efforts have helped create an environment where Arizona's schools remain some of the safest in the nation. It is professionals like you who make a significant difference in safeguarding our educational community. Once again, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. They look forward to your continued success and partnership in advancing their shared mission of protecting students." So I would like to welcome Lindsay and thank her for all that she does. L H U S D is truly blessed to have her and her team serving our students. Thank you. They're going to want board members to take a picture.
Well, the celebrations continue. I know. This is amazing. So, so next, we have some very special guests, and I'm just so pleased and honored and proud. So just a little bit about this next recognition. Since 1983, the A-plus School of Excellence program has served to identify and recognize educational excellence in public schools throughout the state. Schools that earn the A-plus School of Excellence award stand out for their dedication to providing exceptional education to the students of Arizona, implementing practices that go far beyond the standard. The A-plus award transcends test scores and letter grades, examining every facet of school's success. A-plus School of Excellence award-winning schools consistently demonstrate these qualities. So this is pretty good stuff. Commitment to quality and opportunity for all students. High standards for academic achievement. Responsiveness to the evolving educational landscape. Safe, learner-focused environments. Support for innovative, teacher-led instruction. Holistic care for students' social, academic, and intellectual needs. Outstanding service to children, families, and their community. Tonight, I want to acknowledge and present a plaque, a certificate, and of course, you have to have balloons at a celebration. I know. To Shannon Williams, the principal of Nautilus. And of course, we have many incredible staff members alongside her that, you know, definitely worked very, very hard. Absolutely. So, great job to all that were involved. So let's, you want to go ahead and get a picture, and then we're going to do our next campus. Is that okay?
Okay.
All right, do you want any? Let's do one of these, maybe hold this around here. All right, here we go. Oh, you want to go up there? I think they're saying, you want to stick them up?
Come up, all right.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Incredible staff to do an incredible journey. So our next campus, again, A-plus School of Excellence goes to Jenny Sotner and the Starline team. I know many hours went into that application process, so I do appreciate all the hard work of the staff, the school, the scholars, the families. We even had a parent here a little earlier that also helped on that application process. So congratulations for your work.
All right, at this time, we want to give you a moment, if you were just here for the celebration this evening, we want to give you a couple moments to be able to leave the board meeting before we continue. If you'd like to, we invite you to stay. We want you to stay. Just following instructions.
You are more than welcome to stay.
Yes. All right, at this time, we'd like to invite and welcome Carol Noikowski with the Lake Havasu City Education Association.
That's why we bring Karen. So, good evening, President Rose, members of the board, and Dr. Skinner. It's that time of year where we are busy all around. And this evening, I want to give you a quick update on L H C E A's happenings. We've been doing a few different things this last month, and I wanted to share with you what we've been doing. So on March 19th was spring break at the Capitol. A E A sponsors it, and so they have two different weeks. And the week that we were on spring break, Christina Musselman and I went down, and we were able to meet with our legislators. We reached out to them. Representative Biassucci responded, and we were able to meet with him. Senator Angus did get back to us, but she was in committees in the morning, so it was hard to connect with her. And then while we were in the gallery, the House gallery, waiting for the committee on the whole, Representative Galette was actually up there speaking with the Hygienist students from the Bullhead campus. And so we made sure we introduced ourselves and told them we were, you know, on campus. But while we were meeting with Representative Biassucci, we asked about several bills that will impact our district. He did write them down and stated he will get back to us. Our number one concern, of course, is Proposition 123. I am asking everyone in the room, and that's watching, to reach out to our legislators and ask them to get this moving. It is, has not, they've, there's a House and there's a Senate bill, and they have not officially crossed over. There's a lot of construction still going on with it, which I understand, and I know Representative Biassucci did state that it will pass. But our big concern is it sunsets this year, and, which means the funding ends. And so we want to make sure that it gets passed, it gets passed with, you know, the amount of money that we need, and then it gets to the ballot, because this is a constituent vote. So we need to get it on the ballot. It's not, they passed the bill to get it on the ballot. So this is not just passing the bill and getting it out there. And so we need to get it on the ballot, and then we will be working hard to get that passed. Along with HB 2169, which was the school board meetings that I gave to you before, HB 1427, which is the school board administrative instruction requirement, I told you that was my favorite, SB 1472, the school district three-year budget requirement, and 1502, which was that literacy endorsement for our K-12 special education, it's the expansion of it. Those are still moving, they have crossed over, they are moving towards the final say. But while, in the last few weeks, I've noticed, one, we had a Strike Everything Amendment, which was on the pledge, but now that bill is HB 2725, which is in front of you. The bill now reads, it's a competency requirement for social studies for grades six through eight. With our current structure, I'm just concerned about, I've shared with you all the ways sixth grade is at the elementary. We hit reading and writing and arithmetic hard, but our history and our science does not get the full instruction that we would love to be able to instruct. So that would be the concern with that bill. That, yeah, it would include sixth grade. So, and then, this one recently passed the committee at the whole, and it is on the way to the governor's office. It's HB 2484, and that is the school policy on Internet and wireless devices. I know we have policy already in place, but this might be expanding it. And then, it was interesting, it was when I watched the videos, because I have to watch them later, when they're not live, but they actually referred to the Anxious Generation book that we are reading as a district, so, and as a community. So I thought that was, that was what kind of pushed that bill. And then, the final bill that is SB 1091, it is on school bonds and overrides. The nice part about this one, and I was really pleased to see it, is that it adds the language for continuing tax. In the past, when we've ever had to go out for a bond or an override, we've always had to say it's a new tax. And then we had to educate the community that this is not a new tax, it's just a continuation. And so that always was just an issue. And so the fact that that language is there is nice. So that's our report on our spring break and legislation. And then, on March 27th, we invited our A E A organizational rep, Matt Nichols. He came to speak to our members regarding our L H U S D policies, state statute, and federal laws. With everything changing, I just felt it was really important that he came and spoke to our members, just so they understood, like, our policies and our procedures. And so they felt really comfortable after being in the meeting. And so I was, I just wanted to make sure you all were aware that we are rehearsed, well-reharsed, and we are trying to make sure everybody is on our policies. And then lastly, which is what I'm really excited about, is this weekend, four of us will be attending a mediation training, which is hosted by A E A in Phoenix. The focus is on conflict resolution, to help build and strengthen working relationships with our students, the staff, our parents, all members, all stakeholders. The goal is to help increase morale, reduce absentism, and create healthier relationships among everybody. So that's, I was just really excited that I wasn't going alone, that others are coming, they're choosing to go with us. So, but that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, item 4.1, the consent agenda, I need a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And there's no discussion items, just to confirm, there is no call to the public signups this evening? All right, thank you. Moving on to our discussion, I'm sorry, our action items, 6.1, governing board, Thunderbolt Middle School principal. This evening, we have a recommendation that has come from the committee, and I will be reading their recommendation this evening, and then our board will take a vote. This past week, Lake Havasu Unified School District hosted a principal selection committee to review qualified applicants for Thunderbolt Middle School principal's position. We are thrilled to have a strong turnout of qualified applicants for the committee to interview. The committee was comprised of three certified staff, one support staff, three certified administrators, and three community members. The interview process was facilitated by Dr. Rebecca Stone, and the board will be voting on the committee recommendation this evening. In making this important decision, the community, parents, and staff were surveyed to determine the ideal qualities of our next principal and what they need to possess. The survey results indicated a desire for an exceptional leader who is experienced and has middle school experience and can support in improving academic achievement, student behavior for all students, but particularly those with special needs. The survey trends also revealed a need for a leader with a vision on reviving the school's extracurricular programs and increasing school enrollment. With these ideals in mind, the committee is excited to recommend Mr. Michael Skinner as the principal for Thunderbolt Middle School for the upcoming school year. Mr. Skinner has a strong history of leadership, serving as an administrator in elementary, middle, and high school settings, serving as a school counselor, and also a director of student services and human resources. His depth of knowledge and developmental challenges unique to the middle school or age group will allow him to support students, staff, and families on successfully navigating the adolescent years and prepare for a smooth transition into high school. The committee was very impressed by Mr. Skinner's ability to clearly articulate a strong vision for supporting increased student achievement outcomes, his understanding of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and his student-centered focus. He brings over 20 years of leadership experience to Lake Havasu Unified School District, and is well-versed in analyzing assessment data, increasing student achievement outcomes, providing inspiring feedback for staff, and implementing effective discipline models to maintain an orderly and productive learning environment. Mr. Skinner's depth of understanding of childhood and adolescent development, and his commitment to building strong relationships to positively impact long-term success, will be a tremendous asset to Thunderbolt Middle School. It is with great enthusiasm, enthusiasm, that we recommend Dr. Skinner to the principal position at Thunderbolt Middle School, where we know his experience will make a tremendous difference. The committee. At this time, I'd like to open this up for discussion from the board.
So, just to clarify, Mrs. Barney will be finishing out the remainder of this school year, and then Mr. Skinner will take on the duties beginning for the next school year, correct?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, and also want to clarify, as the president of this board, we do want to be totally transparent. This is the husband of interim superintendent Dr. Melissa Skinner. Dr. Skinner was not part of this process. She was kept out of the process the entire time. Dr. Rebecca Stone and the other committee members handled this, along with human resources. And so we thank you for your patience during this time and transparency. And so we just want to be totally transparent, know that she was not involved in this process.
And not only that, but none of us, normally in a hiring committee, at least one board member is present during that panel. None of us board members were, participated in this, and that was by design. I know that we have three new board members, and then, of course, our superintendent is new as well. And so these are people who are becoming known to you in our district, but still are relatively unknown. But the decision and this recommendation from the hiring committee was people who you do know, and who you do trust, and who we trust, to make impartial and objective recommendations. And this is, they recommended Mr. Skinner, so.
All right. Is there any other comments from the board? All right, we will need a motion at this time.
I move to hire Dr. Skinner for the middle school principal position.
And I second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item 6.2, we'd like to welcome technology this evening.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well.
I'm a little rusty at this, it's been a while, so bear with me.
Is your mic on?
I believe so. Let me raise it up a bit here.
There we go.
How's that? A little better?
Good.
Okay. I'm not sure how much introduction it needs. Do you want me to just go ahead and read the item? That'd be good? Okay. So the proposed action item is to upgrade three different items. You'll see that there's an action item two, three, and four, and they all correlate. So I'll go ahead and start with the first one in the order that it's listed on the agenda. The network switch purchase is planned, is a planned upgrade to the existing network to allow for wireless local area network access point expansions to occur. I'll ad lib just a touch here, which is that this is in that effort to, you know, continually upgrade and continue on. That's further in here too, so I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, but, sorry about that. These are being installed because of additional runs that are needed, so we have to have additional ports that increase the capacity in those areas. This is an E-rate funded purchase. This follows applicable guidelines for a category two E-rate purchase for network hardware. This will involve the purchase of five Cisco network switches with licensing to provide port expansion for 165 new connections. This will enable power over Ethernet data transmission and dedicated service to the new APs that are installed to enable connectivity of student laptops and teaching staff laptops at L H U S D to further our efforts to provide the necessary coverage at all sites. The chosen vendor is Logicalis, and is the result of an E-rate quote scoring process with price as the top weighted criteria. The Cisco network products are compatible with L H U S D's existing network. The switches will be configured and installed by the L H U S D technology team, and this is in line with the commitment to provide Internet and internal connections that meet current standards and keep up with changing needs. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department. E-rate funds or other allowable capital funds will be used to cover the district portion of the project. L H U S D qualifies for an 80% coverage for eligible services. The project is pending the outcome of an E-rate funding request that was submitted on 3/26 of this year. Now, the cost breakdown for this particular project with the switches is a total not to exceed $33,000, with an E-rate eligible portion of $32,000. That would leave the L H U S D portion not to exceed $7,300.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on this action item? All right, this time, we would need a motion.
I'll move to approve 6.2.
I second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, item 6.3.
Okay. 6.3 addresses the aging UPS concern inside the district. UPS is an uninterruptible power supply. This project is planned upgrade with the replacement of the existing UPS hardware for nine sites. This involves a purchase and installation of 79 rack-mountable lithium-ion UPS units. The installation of professional services to configure them in an amount not to exceed $240,000. This will provide the replacement of existing UPS units that have reached end of life and continue our efforts to provide network protection at all sites. The district relies on UPS equipment to protect network equipment used for Internet and data access due to unforeseen drops in power quality, such as fluctuations during brownouts, outages, surges, while providing higher uptime during momentary power outages via battery backups. UPS units will be installed in data centers and network storage units that are used to access online curriculum materials. This is in line with the commitment to provide Internet and internal connections that meet current standards and keep up with the changing needs. The final selection of the vendor, also Logicalis, utilized an E-rate approved scoring process with price as a top-weighted criteria. The Lieber brand was chosen for its reliability, commitment to support, and proven track record in large enterprise environments. UPS units will be configured and installed by the vendor. L H U S D technology staff will then be provided access to training. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department. E-rate funds or other allowable capital funds will be used to cover the district's portion of the project. L H U S D qualifies for 80% coverage for eligible services. The project is pending the outcome of E-rate funding request that was submitted on 3/26 of this year. Cost breakdown, total project cost not to exceed $240,000. E-rate eligible portion is $224,000, and 492, well, sorry, I messed that up, $224,492. Non-eligible portion is $13,200, and L H U S D portion is not to exceed $60,000.
Okay. All right, thank you. And is there any questions from the board? All right, I will need a motion.
I move to approve 6.3.
I second. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, item 6.4, technology.
Very good. This is the final and the largest portion of the project. The E-rate Wireless Local Area Network, or W LAN project, is a planned upgrade and replacement of the existing W LAN for nine sites. This involves the purchase and installation of 406 new wireless access points, or APs, similar to the one in the middle of this room right here. They're all going to be replaced. So this is really a major upgrade for us. I'm kind of excited about this, you know. They said, can you come and read this? I said, sure, I'll do this, this is great. We've been thinking about this for years, right? So, the installation of 165 new network cables, which we talked about earlier, and professional services to configure the new network in an amount not to exceed $600,000. This will provide the replacement and expansion of the existing W LAN that enables network connectivity of student laptops, teaching staff laptops. of student laptops, teaching staff laptops, excuse me, and LHUSD that have reached the end-of-life cycle and continue our efforts to provide the necessary coverage at all sites. The access points will be installed in classrooms and used to access online curriculum materials. This is in line with the commitment to provide Internet and internal connections that meet current standards and keep up with changing needs. The access points will be configured and installed by the vendor, Logicalis. LHUSD technology staff will be provided access to training for the new platform. The final selection, again, involved the vendor E-rate approved scoring process with price as the top-weighted criteria. The Juniper brand is chosen for its robust tools, reliability, commitment to support, and proven track record in larger enterprise environments. I didn't put it on here because I didn't want to bury you guys too much in it, but it also has an AI component. That's, it meets our privacy requirements, but it's there to help the network administrator, you know, be able to provide a higher uptime. So, I have a whole thing of things I can add to if you'd like at the end. I can answer questions on it too, if you guys need to, I'm sorry. All right, the access points will be configured and installed by the vendor. Let's see here, Logicalis, we already did that, sorry about that. This has been reviewed and approved by the business department. E-rate funds or other allowable capital funds will be used to cover the district's portion of the project. LHUSD qualifies for an 80% coverage for eligible services. The project is pending the outcome of an E-rate funding request that was submitted on 3/26. The cost breakdown, total project cost not to exceed $600,000, with an E-rate eligible portion of $536,000. Non-eligible portion would be a little over $39,000, and the LHUSD portion is not to exceed $152,000.
Okay. All right, thank you. And is there any discussion from the board?
Just that I'm glad we're doing a LAN upgrade, keep our district modernized, keep our children having access to up-to-date Internet access and the building, I'm glad there's AI. So, thank you for bringing this to us.
And I just want to say, we are very thankful for your department. No one understands how important technology is until your computer doesn't work, or your Internet goes down, so then you panic. So, thank you in your department for what you do. I need now a motion on item 6.4.
I move to approve 6.4.
I second.
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
Yes. All right, item 6.5, governing board, new no DEI policy before you, members, you've been able to review our updated versions of the policy from our work session. I want to thank all of my fellow colleagues for all the hard work that we have put into this, and all of you who attended our work session, especially our administrative team and teachers, to give input, and to our food services department, your input was also greatly appreciated. And through all of these policies, so tonight, first presented, the governing board now has before us the no DEI policy prohibiting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, ensuring that educational success is based solely on merit, academic performance, and individual effort. Is there any discussion at this time?
I'm satisfied with the changes that we've made, and it's good to me.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm not going to belabor the point. I do disagree with the definitions that are offered in here. I prefer to get my definitions out of dictionaries, but I'm going to leave that part alone. Is there a way of displaying the definition here? Okay, or I could read it to you. I see some people who probably weren't here for the work session. Okay, yes, it's the green part that I'm referring to. So, I don't agree with the definition, but here is why I will be voting for this policy. So, on item number seven, there's a provision that says that any current programs, curricula, or initiative subject to removal based on this policy will be reviewed by the governing board at a regularly scheduled meeting prior to its removal. So, we are going to have the same level of public inspection and transparency prior to removing something that we did prior to its adoption. So, I am satisfied by that. One thing, I will just say that what makes me nervous about this just in general is that diversity, equity, and inclusion is meant to protect our most vulnerable citizens. I'm thinking specifically of special needs students. Special needs students are already the last thought of and the least thought of in our society, and I worry that this is rolling back a level of protection when they're already at a disadvantage. I do have confidence in the leaders of the school. During our work session, if you were not here, we talked specifically about hiring practices. We have an HR department that I am confident will implement fair policies, whether there's a rule telling them to be fair or not. So, this policy, for me, doesn't necessarily target specific individuals. I have confidence in the individuals that work in our district. If I didn't, I would say something. But I feel like rolling back diversity, equity, and inclusion changes the way people feel about our institution as a whole. That's what makes me nervous. I will, like I said at the beginning, I will be voting for this because it does have that level of public transparency prior to removing anything that is currently in our schools.
Thank you, Member Ramon. Any other discussion from members?
And just briefly, the definition that we've included here is because DEI has gone from dictionary definitions of those words to an ideological position around those words. And this definition goes after the ideological position and not the definition. We already have a diverse campus. We already have people that are bought in and have community equity in this. The community is here, that is equity and inclusion. We are inclusive of everybody. We have been a board that has brought more discussion than I think anyone else has, and so we are going to continue that. But this definition attacks the ideological stance in that we will not be using that ideology in this district.
Awesome. Thank you, Vice President Houston. Member Tinsley, anything?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I just want to state before I call for a vote, I want to say I'm proud of this board for coming together and being able to work through differences of opinions. And I just want to remind everybody, we don't always have to agree on issues, but we got to be able to have discussions and conversations. Not only is DEI doesn't belong in schools, number two, we have received letters from the federal government stating, if your school districts do not have DEI policies, we will, the federal government will cut off funding. That has already began in some school districts in the Valley. And so, I'm thankful for this board to be able to work together, and now at this time, I will call for a vote.
I move to approve 6.5.
I second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
David Rose?
Yes. All right, item 6.6, new safety in locker rooms, restrooms, sleeping quarters policies. This clearly defines the uses of facilities to promote privacy, security, and consistency for all students. I'd like to open it up for discussion at this time. All right, no discussion?
Hold on.
Oh, you do.
Not so bad.
Okay. Man, I thought it was.
Again, I just want to highlight one change that we made. This is already, during our work session, again, we were able to talk through how this practically is implemented in our schools. Our schools already really do this. I mean, providing children with restroom access has not exactly been the riddle of the Sphinx. I mean, we've been able to get children to do, be able to do what they need to do in an appropriate way. We are, we did add one exclusion to this policy, so it does not apply to athletic teams if, for after-school sports. So, a lot of times, you know, the visiting team, if there is a boys' basketball team, they're using the girls' locker room, this policy would not apply in that type of situation.
All right, thank you, Member Ramon. Any other discussion from?
I just want to thank the staff that came and gave us their perspective, so we had a better understanding of how this actually worked. Without that perspective, these policies cannot be refined. So, thank you, and I hope that all the staff that came and more staff will come out in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to say again, thank you to our staff, our administrators, teachers, coaches, who, even our gym teachers who came and gave us input and helped us really finalize this policy. We have a duty to protect our daughters, and we are going to do that.
And our sons.
And our sons. We live in a crazy time. This is, again, it's already been happening here. Now, in conversations with some of the administrators, there were some gray areas on the overnight stay, and they were thankful that we were able to kind of strengthen that. And again, I want to thank you to my colleagues for working together on this, and now I call for a vote on item 6.6.
I move to approve 6.6.
I'll second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
David Rose?
Yes. And item 6.7, new no grooming and child protection policy. It establishes clear guidelines to prevent inappropriate interactions between students and adults, ensuring a safe and supportive learning environment free from exploitation. I'm going to now open it up for discussion to the board.
So, again, just, this is something that we covered during our work session, but this is strengthening an existing policy. This is policy 4-202. So, we already had a list of appropriate boundaries between staff and students to govern that interaction and make sure that there wasn't grooming behavior or any sort of predatory behavior happening on our campuses. So, this does strengthen an already-existing policy. I would like the minutes to reflect that my yes vote is a reaffirmation of current policy.
All right, any other discussion? All right, at this time, I call for a vote.
I move to approve 6.7.
I second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
Yes. All right, at this time, item 6.8, second reading of updated policy 3-201, facilities. The governing board proposes the following language be added to policy 3-201, facilities. Negotiations for the sell or lease of any district facility may only be done by the governing board or their designee. Any designee must be appointed by the board, and any negotiations must be approved through a final vote of the full governing board. Open 6.8 for discussion.
You know, we've had some confusion recently on who's negotiating on behalf of this board, and I'm glad that we can put this into policy so that any entity that wants to come to the table with a district property or anything knows the proper entity they are dealing with, and that is this board, no one else. So, nothing further.
All right, any other discussion?
No, this definitely gets rid of some confusion, for sure, especially for future.
Yep.
Correct. All right.
I move to approve 6.8.
I'll second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
David Rose?
Yes. Item 7.1, remarks from Dr. Skinner, our superintendent.
Well, it has been a great nine days, busy, but great. The work is good. So, had some amazing visits to campuses, meeting with all of the departments, listening and hearing from our departments and our principals regarding the needs that we need to look at to make our schools number one and to be as successful as we possibly can in positive outcomes. So, it's been a pleasure to be able to meet with everyone and really kind of get that dialed in and hear all the narratives, historical trends, and where we need to go in the future. I know we're wrapping up testing. Kids have been working really hard to, you know, complete their state assessments. So, that's always a stressful time for campuses, so I do appreciate our campus administrators for all the hard work they've been putting in as well. So, yeah, so it's been great. Very proud of the work our staff is doing.
And I just want to say thank you for hitting the ground running as hard as you have, and it's exciting to see that you're already bringing ideas and recommendations to us on how we can improve and become better. So, thank you, and keep up the good work.
And I just want to say thank you for working alongside Dr. Stone. So, Dr. Stone and Dr. Skinner are working together as the district moves forward, and we're thankful for that collaboration of two great superintendent minds. So, thank you. At this time, 7.2, any discussion from the governing board members or announcements? All right, I have two things I would like to bring up this evening. For our next meeting, I would like us as a board to begin to discuss school safety. School safety is extremely important. In visiting some of our facilities, there are some concerns in meeting with our administrators and our facility directors, and we have an obligation as a board to make sure that our students and our staff and our teachers are protected. And so, I would like us to begin to look at a school safety audit for all of our campuses and our district office. So often, people will do a school safety audit on campuses and completely forget about the central office. So, I'd like us to begin that in our May meeting, to open up for opportunities for that, to just strengthen our safe schools and do great things for our students, teachers, and staff in this district. I will say, for some of our schools, that you have aged buildings. We, I hear the comments, star line and Havasu High specifically start going. And just know that we are beginning to have those conversations of what can that look like in the future to improve those situations. So, to those teachers, administrators, staff in those buildings, thank you for your hard work, and we look forward to doing great things for you and strengthening the safety of every facility in this community that belongs to this district. So, thank you. Number two, we, as a board, would like to start coming to individual schools to do a work session. To all of you in this building this evening in this meeting that are a teacher, an administrator, we want to come to your school and hear from you. Every school is different, and what we're able to do for Oral Grande is not the same needs that Havasu High has, and we understand that each school is serving different students, different families, and there is different needs. So, this board will be coming to a school near you, and I just want to clarify, we are coming not for you to hear from us. We are coming to hear from you because your voice matters, and we want to hear the things that you have to say. So, we will be working with the superintendent to get that scheduled. Other than that, that's all that I have. If no other board member has any?
I do have one. I do have one. Ms. Skinner, something, actually, Ms. Tinsley and I have been talking about this, and just our accessibility to tutors and extra teaching, or extra tutoring for students, that's something that I've heard a lot that we have difficulty with. So, I'd like to start kicking around ways to improve tutoring, ways to improve access to tutoring as well, so.
And also, just to inform the community, I have received an update that, as you know, we have a vacant seat. Former President Sharon Harvey left us and moved to Phoenix, and we are thankful for her service, and so there is interviews that are being set for that seat, and we look forward to working with whoever that individual is that is going to be joining our team soon. So, if that's it, then I need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.